Good evening, everyone. It is 5:00. I will go ahead and call today's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item on the agenda today is an approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the agenda, second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The next item today is a recognition of several donations made. One is a donation received from the Hitterdal Area Lions Club in the amount of $200 to support the Clay County Sheriff's Office Canine Program. Another from the Western Minnesota Steam Threshers Union, the amount of $1,000 in going towards the Clay County Sheriff's Office, HOSI. And then another from them in the amount of $750 for Clay County Jail Work Detail. A huge thank you to those agencies for supporting our sheriff's office. Citizens to be heard today, is there anyone wishing to speak on anything on the county board agenda or not on the agenda? Any citizens to be heard? Steve, have we had any requests to speak?
We have received some information, Madam Chair, not necessarily to speak but to notify into the record. If the board recalls, this past month, we had a consider an adoption of a zoning map and text amendment through the passage of ordinance 22-5. During that time, we had some citizens that spoke, not necessarily to our ordinance, but to some concerns that they had due to pit 21 and some impacts they believed that were responsible around their house. And as part of that, Holcombe MWR, Inc., which is formerly known as Aggregates Industries, did reach out, both to myself and Mr. Jacobson, to provide some information in regards or in response to what was shared by that citizen, I guess, to refute that. I do know we have a representative on the line there. I don't know if they had anything that they wished to say, but I did share with them that we would provide this to you and make it part of the record.
Is anyone online wishing to speak for this item? We'll make sure we have the microphones unmuted. Is it Shari?
Yes. Hello. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Shari Eilertson. I'm the Environment and Land Manager for Wholesome, formerly known as Aggregates Industries. And so, not really anything additional to add, just wanted to submit the memo and make just the information provided so that it's available to the board.
Really do appreciate that. As a follow-up to the comments made at the board, we did have a meeting with Shari and members of staff, but also Matt Jacobson and I were able to take part in that to discuss questions and concerns that had been brought up. After that, as a follow-up, I know you had met on-site with those same residents to allow them the opportunity to look at the actual facility and any drainage that they were worried about, so they were able to actually see the system to help clarify any questions in that regard. Was there anyone else wanting to speak to this piece? Otherwise, we'll make sure that it's, one, in the record, but, two, that the commission has the comments. Anything else? Well, thank you, Shari, for being responsive to those comments and also working with staff to address the issues.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to speak?
Madam Chair, just as a formality, because the public hearing was closed, this addition to the record would just go into, I would assume it would just go into our regular meeting minutes as a, accepting this as additional information, but it can't technically be part of the public record.
It wasn't necessarily meant to be part of the public hearing. Obviously, those comments came during that. It was just as a follow-up to the information for the board. So they're submitting these comments as a matter of record in the citizens to be heard.
I move receipt and file the letter.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Campbell to receive and file the comment.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Any other citizens wishing to speak tonight? Any other citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none. We have a couple employee recognitions this evening. My guess is these people are not venturing out on the roads like us. So this evening, we'd like to formally recognize Randy Carlson. Randy has been with the county for 30 years. He is an engineer tech in our Highway Department. I know that Justin's here. Justin, if you'd like to say a couple words about Randy.
Unfortunately, Randy did not want to venture out in the weather, but I just wanted to say thank you to Randy. In my time here, he's been a tremendous asset to me, and in the 30 years, he's been a great asset to Clay County, and just wanted to tell him thank you.
Make sure he gets that. I think if Randy was going ice fishing, he might want to venture out in this weather, but that's neither here nor there. We'd also tonight like to recognize Lori Johnson, our Clay County Auditor Treasurer. Lori has been with the county for 35 years, certainly has benefited from her leadership. I know, Steve, you wanted to say a couple words as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's too bad Lori couldn't be here. She's such an integral part of our team here at Clay County. We're fortunate to have someone that is as knowledgeable and dedicated as Lori is. She really touches every department, every aspect here at the county, and so we're very fortunate. And not only is she impactful for us, but she's also known throughout our region through different projects. And so, I know she's watching us right now, so I have your 15-year contract ready to go. So, thank you, Lori.
All right. And I think we should have a round of applause for both. Thank you. Next item on the agenda today is an approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
A motion offered from Commissioner Campbell to pay the bills and vouchers. A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The next item today is the meeting minutes from the Tuesday, November 22 meeting.
Move for approval.
A motion to approve the minutes, and a second from Commissioner Gross. I did maybe just have a point of clarification. In our discussion with Representative Keeler, we had talked a little bit about, I'm trying to find it, limitations regarding the number of days commissioners are allowed to miss Board of Commissioner meetings. I think that we should have a caveat in there that is in regards to the COVID allowances that happened. I think it just would be as simple as clearing that up because it was something that we then were sending letters of support for. Is that okay?
That's acceptable.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you, Commissioner Gross. Any other discussion on the 22nd meeting minutes? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. We also have the meeting minutes from the 29th Commission meeting.
Move to approve.
A motion from Commissioner Gross to approve the minutes, a second from Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you. Item two today is a request for approval to advertise for SAP 14-601-009. We have our county engineer, Justin Sorum, with today. Morning, Justin.
Good afternoon.
And afternoon, and evening, and all of it.
Yes, so this is the approval to advertise for the removal of the North Broadway Bridge on Cassau 1. So this is a cooperative project we've been working on with the city of Fargo and Mendat, and the proposed letting date would be January 24, 2023.
Questions from the board? I think the first item to address the need is going forward with this removal, so I support this as well.
This has been discussed before, and it's something we need to do, so make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve from Commissioner Gross, a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item three today is the information on the amendment to the Cooperative Construction Agreement with Mendat and the city of Barnesville.
So back in September, I brought forward an item. So Barnesville received federal funding for a transportation alternatives project through Barnesville, and bids came in a little bit higher than expected, and they did receive 100, an extra $115,736 in federal funds. And since we are the sponsor for Barnesville, the agreement is with us and the city of Barnesville.
So you aren't needing any action on this change?
No, just as an FYI.
Just a public recognition that there's an additional $115,736 that the county is eligible for? Any further questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that. Item four is the request to accept the Minnesota Department of Human Services County grant. We have with us James O'Donnell today, our Director of our juvenile facility.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
I did request to be able to accept a grant from the Minnesota Department of Human Services. It's six months. It'll pay for two staff. It's something that's necessary, and we've worked toward working that into our 2023 budget. It's basically, it deals with a crisis, basically, that's happening across the state with placement options for aggressive youth. Clay County's always been proactive. His board supported our facility over there, and we haven't been impacted as harshly as some of the other areas across the state. And there are very few placement options across the state, so.
Questions from the board? Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. James, I know we've had some conversations in the past about, and I, you know, I think you get the different levels of clientele, and some can be very difficult to the point where a decision might be made that they're probably best not to be in our facility.
Correct.
Right? So that there's better, there needs to be something different than what we offer.
There needs to be hospital-based.
Yeah, right, right. So, but, so this doesn't, you know, what this grant would do, this doesn't alter your ability to...
I would say it solidifies our ability.
Okay.
For our non-secure unit, the kids that should be in hospital areas, but hospitals don't accept them.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question.
Board questions? Board wishes?
Move to approve.
A motion offered from Commissioner Gross to approve the grant, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five is a request to approve the Resource Recovery Center amended agreement. We have with us Cory Bang, our Solid Waste Director, and Joe Olson, our Facilities Director. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The item we have tonight is just an amendment on our agreement with the city of Moorhead in the operations of the new transfer station, our Resource Recovery Center. The need for the amendments, when we originally signed the agreement, there was supposed to be two meters, so both sides would be billed accordingly. We only got one meter put in the building, so we've come up with an agreement of 43% for the county and 57% for the city. That's how we broke down the square footage of the building. And we added some language that the county would be responsible for snow removal in front of the doors for our section of the building. Those are basically the two reasons for the amendment. And both the attorneys from Clay County and the city of Moorhead have approved these amendments.
Questions for either of them? Joe, did you have anything?
Yeah, just to add to that, too, the city of Moorhead had planned on having this on their council last night, but did not, didn't get on, so they're planning to get it on to next council meeting next Monday. So you guys would be approving this first for them, but...
I think they are not having another meeting now until after the first of the year, correct? It's my understanding that last night's meeting was their last of the year.
Yeah, I've been checking. I'll check. Okay, that's, you're probably right. And then Steve Iverson is who we've been directly dealing with, and he's kind of given the okay for all this. So we may have them approve at the next meeting, I guess.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
So this service agreement, is this, is this an entirely new document, or are we redlining a certain area or changing a certain area?
Yep.
Should be highlighted on page three and four of the document.
Yeah, under section 6.01, there's some language about four categories down that says lawn care and snow removal of entire campus to include parking lot, road, scale house, and area. Clay County will remove snow from the sidewalks and doorways. That's what has been added into it. And then just under, we believe it's, it's under the utilities in...
701.
Yeah, 701 is where we've stated that we're going to...
The percentage, okay.
Yep, the percentage. So those are your two major changes. This was the original document, so.
Do we have to buy extra equipment to go up there then?
We're kind of talking about that right now. I, as far as the snow removal portion, no. We've got what we need, we think, but, so, but we're talking about an overall, some sort of a skidster or something up there.
If funds allow.
Yep. But our snow removal on the sidewalks, very minimal. It's just a small sidewalk we're doing and some doors, so shovels can handle that one, but...
Oh, okay.
City of Moorhead will be using their equipment to remove all the snow around the parking lots and everything, so.
I know we've had long discussions about this document, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. My comments would be, does it seem, seem as though it would make more sense to either have us build the city for those, clearing those, instead of having two separate crews removing snow?
Oh, yeah.
Makes the most sense?
Yeah.
I trust that you've vetted that out, and it's not like...
The snow we're talking about removing is just by the walk-in doors and that kind of stuff, but it's basic shovel work, and it'll be done periodically through the day by the tenants.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And just a note on the billing portion, when all utilities will come to us, we'll bill, we'll pay the whole thing, and then turn around, bill 57% to the city as that revenue coming in.
Questions from the board? Wishes?
I'd move approval of the amended document.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve the amended agreement.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Gross. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed that carries? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six is a request to appoint the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors, President-at-Large Designee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you recall, back in November 22, this board assigned Commissioner Ebinger to continue as the Designee for the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Executive Board. The President has allowed a second of the, excuse me, of the Board of Directors has allowed an at-large Designee from the county's perspective, and we are, we have, again, been approved to have that as far as, as far as that for 2023, and so we are looking for an appointment from this board.
Okay. Board discussion? Commissioner Kaylee.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. Having served in that space, and also keeping in mind the other committee assignments that I have currently, there was a conflict regularly with the Clay County Substance Abuse and Suicide Prevention Committee. Both of those meetings happen at the same time. And so, my recommendation would be to make sure that whoever we assign or approve for this position, they do not have that other committee assignment.
Commissioner Kaylee, when does that typically meet? On Mondays? Is that...
No, it's, is that the...
Thursdays on 7:30 in the morning, when the board meets, but the, I currently have the Substance Abuse Committee as well. And Commissioner Kaylee has been covering for me a great deal because probably three out of four of those meetings, I'm at the EDC, which starts 7:30 in the morning, and I'm on the Executive Committee, which meets monthly. The other, the at-large position we're talking about here meets quarterly.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could, I, you know, I appreciate that being brought up and the conflict that that can raise. I, and I spoke of this last time. There's something nice to serve on that as well, and it, but I think Commissioner-elect Kravenhoff, I think this really would fit his role with his background to be on that. And it would seem to me that if, if we could put him in that role, and I know Commissioner Mojo, you have also been involved in a lot of these different areas that deal with the substance abuse piece, and if it meant switching that, I would just as soon see Commissioner Mojo go on the substance abuse one as, but again, this is something that we're going to be doing in January. But I really think that Paul would be, Kravenoff would serve well on that, and he's, you know, I think he's dealt with a lot of these folks on there, and I think he would, you know, really help our areas of what we're looking for in that regard, so.
I had previously been on that committee and had given it in regards to planning for our detox, making sure that we all had an understanding of community need, but...
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, I think, I mean, this is, as was mentioned, the bylaws for, for the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Group requires, and that's why the request is before you to set, they're actually setting it, I think, Thursday through their bylaws. The additional conversation with the Substance Abuse Committee, we could carry on that conversation.
Right, right. Yeah, and again, I, but I...
If I could point out, you know, I'd be happy to continue to serve on substance abuse. We have this conflict, and we have the conflict on an impacted level where it's hard to get a commissioner on that committee. I'd be happy to continue with it if we can adjust the meeting times, and I don't know how that's going to impact on everybody else. But if they could make it on a, maybe a Monday or Wednesday morning, that would be, that would be something we could do to adjust it. But, and I would be happy to serve as an alternate because there are times where I can miss an EDC board meeting, but not often. The Executive Committee usually has some things that you pretty much need to keep up with, so.
Okay. Other comments?
So the EDC is looking for who we would like to have as that at-large position, right?
Yes.
Or that quarterly meeting.
Huh?
Or a quarterly meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
What position are you in?
I guess I would, I would move that we would request that Commissioner-elect Paul Kravenoff serve in that capacity.
We have a motion to appoint that to the portfolio.
So moved.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any discussion?
And I, and I do think that, you know, the issue regarding the substance abuse one we can have when we're setting, you know, looking at the committees for...
And we have had a history of appointing a Commissioner-elect to boards that are meeting in January after the oath, so it's certainly within what we've done before?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Kaylee, I know that we've really appreciated your leadership in that position, so thank you for serving there. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven today is Attachment H, the interviews for the one appointment to the Buffalo Red River Watershed Board. There is, this is something that has been advertised. It would be appointing one manager to complete a term on the Buffalo Red River Watershed District Board from January 23 through August 2024. We do have two applications of interest. One would be Mr. Bill Davis, who is joining us online, and the second then would be Mark Anderson. So we will have the conversation with the applicants. Bill, if we could start, since you're first in my packet.
Can you hear me?
We can hear and see you, Bill.
Okay.
All right. Typically, so Bill, we have your application for interest, but if you'd like to just give us a brief introduction to who you are. Some of us know you from serving in other capacities. I will.
I guess my name is Bill Davis. I live in Dilworth. I've been in the county all my life. Grew up in Glendon, I guess, and I've been moving to Dilworth since 1980. I worked at Coca-Cola until I retired here 12 years ago, I guess. And I served on the Planning Commission Board for the last few years, nine years, I guess. And the Watershed Board is interested me. I'm a landowner in Clay County, which I inherited, but that's neither here nor there, I guess. But ditch 12, I'm affected by ditch 12, Riverton Township, ditch 12 retention pond there, ditch 68, the East River, the East Glendon Tributary is going to be affecting me a little bit, plus indirectly, of course, ditch 50 through Dilworth. And so I've seen the effects that the watershed has done, and I think they do great things. And I would like to have an opportunity to be on that board.
Thank you, Bill. We do have several questions we're going to go through and ask if, Commissioner, if you don't mind, we'll go through just around and each pick a question. I'll start with one and go to Commissioner Campbell and then around. Bill, the first question is, what experience would you bring to the Buffalo Red River Watershed District Board of Managers?
Like I say, I think I've seen the effects of what, how the ditches affect the land out there. I got the ones that I've paged directly on, but also the ones I've seen indirectly on. And I've got a friend that lives on the Buffalo River, and I've heard how he, how the ditches actually adversely affect him because the water gets to him faster. But that's, the watershed actually put a ring deck around his property for him, so I think I could bring a perspective about the landowner and how it affects the people, and not just directly but indirectly, about the taxation. I always got this question about how they consider benefit. The, sometimes the benefit seems like it, they go by the lay of the land, but the, we have changed the lay of the land. The water doesn't flow like it used to. And I'd like to see them take that into consideration a little bit.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah. Bill, what do you, or why do you want to be a watershed manager?
I enjoyed the time on the Planning Commission. I thought it was very interesting and very eye-opening, actually, about the things that go on in the county. And I think I had some spirited conversations with Bruce before he retired, back in, probably started in 2010. And it just very interesting, seems very, the area is very interesting to me. I don't think I've had it with the board directly. But like I say, I really enjoyed talking to Bruce because after I started taking care of the land out there, I went to Bruce with a lot of questions. And I thought Bruce Albright was probably the authority in the Clay County on water, and the way it went. And I got a pretty good perspective of how he thought, and kind of changed my mind about ways, why they do things. I think that's the biggest impact, was interaction with Bruce Albright.
Commissioner Gross, number five?
The Clay County Commissioners have been in support of the diversion project. You've appointed to the board. How would you support efforts to achieve completion of this project?
I'm going to smile on this one. The, as it was first proposed through Clay County, it seemed like a horrible project, but it's, it's something that needs to be done. Fargo, I was, back in 97, I had to go to work up in Grand Forks to help some of the employees that we, that worked up there, and it was horrible experience. Emptying out everybody's house on the lower level, throwing away absolutely everything. To see that happen in Fargo and Morehead would be a disaster, and I think it's something that just, it really does have to be completed.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions for Bill? Thank you very much, Bill. We'll go ahead and ask questions of Mark if you don't have anything else. Mr. Anderson?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mark. Do you want to introduce yourself to the board, and then we'll go through and ask?
I'm Mark Anderson. I think I know most of you. Living just out of Comstock, lifelong resident, married 46 years, and that's about it.
All right. We do have some questions for you, Mark. What experience would you bring to the Buffalo Red River Watershed District Board of Managers?
I'm, my family's lived here for 100 years, farmed for over 100 years, and I actually was a manager of the Buffalo Watershed for six years before this. I think I can hit the ground running. I met most of the agency people, got to know them, met some very good people in Fish and Wildlife and all the other things, that all the hoops you've got to go through and stuff, and so I think I can hit the ground running, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell, you have number two?
Oh, yes. Why do you want to do this again?
Good question.
I mean, that's what, that's the same.
No, I know, no, it's, I had three former, or three board members that are on the watershed right now call me when there was an opening and ask me to apply. I had five or six, or a few farmers, they really think there should be at least one farmer on the board from Clay County. Morehead's very important. I understand that. My kid, my son lives in Morehead. Morehead's very important, but they feel, I've had many comments that they feel there should be at least one farmer on the watershed board.
Question three, Commissioner Ebinger.
Mark, what is your philosophy on managing drainage?
Managing drainage has to be a system-wide event or project. You, you can't just dump water on somebody without, you know, figuring out how to get rid of it. So you have to get everybody involved. And what's almost better now is that, it used to be that one farmer had this quarter, one had this quarter, one had this quarter, and now it's kind of gotten where there's more, they own more. So if I drain on me, and then I drain on me, this is not a good thing. So you have to figure out how to make it work. And one of the things is, I used, my joke is, I used to be related to half the county, and then I got married, I'm related to the other half. I know a lot of people, and I think I can work with people to make it work, because, you know, it's the old saying, you can pick your friends, you can't pick your relatives, but you still have to make, make it work. It's, it's got to work for everybody, otherwise it's not a good plan.
All right. Question four, Commissioner Kaylee.
Have you had personal experience with a watershed board in the past? And if yes, was it generally a positive experience? How would that experience affect your service as a watershed manager?
And I do have to agree with my, or Bruce Albright was the Buffalo Watershed. I've worked with Bruce since I was 20 years old, got on the watershed board. He, he was the watershed. But now we have to move on, and now we have to, I've met with Christina a few times on, I'm on the township board, done some ditches and some culverts and stuff, and I, I think there's a lot of potential there. But we have to realize that nobody's Bruce Albright. We have to go from there and build and make it better.
Commissioner Gross, number five?
The Clay County Commissioner has been in support of the diversion project. You've appointed to the board. How would you support efforts to achieve completion of this project?
Like I said before, Morehead's important, Fargo's important. I got in a little trouble before because I asked a lot of questions of the diversion authority. I really don't have a problem with the diversion, but Fargo-Morehead had thousands of people advocating for them. The people that were sacrificing didn't have many people advocating for them. And that's where I got into trouble, because I want to make sure they do it right. I want to make sure that the people that were sacrificing, that were losing homes, losing their land, were getting compensated. And I think it, you know, it took more time, probably cost more money, but I think in the long run, it's going to be a better project in the long run, because they realize that if you've got a project that's huge, you have to do it right. You know, if you mess it up, it, it, there's going to be consequences for 50 or 100 years. So I just wanted to say that I was advocating for the people that, where I was at. And I was one of them. The only thing that kind of upset me, our lawyer told me I couldn't vote. So it, you know, when your, when your lawyer tells you not to vote, and you're, you know, the Buffalo Watershed is bigger than Mark Anderson or anybody, you know, you don't vote. That's the way it was, so.
Any other questions for Mark? Well, I will say, I, I had the opportunity to serve with Mark on the Governor's Task Force that talked about mitigating the FM diversion. I had the privilege of serving with Bill Davis on the planning commission. And a lot of times, we say to residents who put their name out to be part of Effective Solutions, thank you for putting your, your hat in the ring. It really does take citizens to help lead and guide policy decisions within this community and county, and we certainly do appreciate that. Anything else?
Thank you for consideration.
Thanks, Mark.
Have a great meeting.
Thank you. Any discussion, but I did see it was advertised as interviews?
Yes, Madam Chair, the ad did, did say it would be interviews they could conduct, and you could consider making appointment, or you could move that on for a later discussion.
The appointment needs to happen by the first meeting in January, correct? Any other discussion? Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
You know, I, I think while, while Bill is on here too, I just want to thank him for taking any interest in, in watershed issues within Clay County. I think both of them spoke of the significance and importance of water management. One of the things in our watershed district, we have, we have Becker County, portion of Becker County, we have Otter Tail County, we have Wilkin County, and we have Clay County. And one of the things that happens is all of water flows, guess where it comes? And we're the recipient of it all. And I, and I think we need to always make sure that we have, we advocate, especially since there was a change in the watershed makeup from a, from a five-member board to a seven, and we lost our, basically, our majority as a county in that. I still think it's really important, you know, whether it's Mark or whether it's Bill, that we always remember that Clay County is close to 80% of the population base, and it's probably 80% of the funding source for the, for all of the projects that are done within the watershed. And we can't lose sight of that. And, but I, Bill, going back to you, and I know I, I followed you on planning commission, you were certainly a very dedicated person on there. And, and Mark, I know you've, there's an awful lot of people that think highly of, of your knowledge in water issues. I couldn't have disagreed more with you in certain areas. We respectfully can agree to disagree on those things. Actually, I, I think number five should have been reworded. I think, you know, I think that was something that was on from previous interviews. It's, it's not a matter of whether we politically agree with the project now or not, because we know what's happening. And now it becomes, how do we make it to the finish line the best? I think that's better, a better question to be asking right now, and, and without putting a lot of hurdles, additional hurdles in there to, to hold it up as opposed to finishing it. But, so I, you know, Mark, I know we've disagreed, but I know there's a lot of people that, that also think that you have an awful lot of good to offer on, on the watershed. So it's, so thank you to both. I, I'm, you know, I don't know, Madam Chair, I, I wouldn't mind having a little bit of time to make a decision on this. We don't think have, have to do it today, but.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I do want to say a piece, having been the only person on this board that, that lives in the country. The makeup of our board is important to offer, have the most varied experience and life experiences as we can. And so I fiercely advocate for our municipal areas, but I think that I have, I'm hopeful that I can represent the rural area as well. I know you all do, but when you, when you physically live on a farm, I think it's a little different. And both Bill and, and Mark do live in rural Clay County. I know Bill lives in town, but, you know, does pay rural taxes. And I think as we go forward with board makeups in the future, it is important to have that voice present. I know currently that's not necessarily the case, and, and the managers that have served have served to the best of their abilities, so I'm not, not discounting anyone's service. But I will say, to have the most varied voices possible on the boards that we appoint is, is really as important as we can, an important goal. So I'm okay if we'd like to wait to appoint at a later time as well, if you need time to digest or have conversations. Anything else?
Thank you for consideration and have a great meeting.
I might need a pullout if I get stuck on the road, you know. You're going south. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Bill, as well. Okay, item, we do have our truth and taxation. There we go. We do have our truth and taxation at 6:00, but I'm hopeful that we can get through as many of the committee reports as possible. If we do not get that done before 6:00, we can follow up at the end. Commissioner Kaylee, would you like to start this week?
Sure. And due to our AMC conference, we have two weeks to report, right?
Correct.
Okay, so November 30th, I attended a meeting with Rhonda Porter and Creating Community Consulting, who we had hired through a grant to work on childcare. They reported that they've been working on a set of policy recommendations for businesses to be more childcare and family-friendly, as well as ideas for larger businesses to support childcare spots or offer space for a childcare partner on their facility. Happy news to report for one of the projects that that group is working on, they have received $120,000 in a grant from Deed to support new childcare center development in Clay County. So congratulations to them for that work on that. We had a really minimal investment of ARPA funds and a grant from West Central Initiative to support this, and so to have already $120,000 in return, I think is incredible. And they also gave some updates on a project in progress which involves a family resource center with the Cass Clay Land Trust and a new childcare center in the Ramke Park area in Morehead. That seems to be moving ahead swiftly. They're still looking for funding for a feasibility study. And there are partners in place for a community needs assessment as well to help shape what that family resource center will be providing. I want to make sure that the county commissioners know that on top of that $120,000, $120,000 from Deed, there's a lot of other committed community partners with verbal agreements to be in support financially of that project. So look forward to that coming to fruition. On the first, I attended our Children's Mental Health Local Advisory Council meeting. We had some discussion on shaping the survey that goes out annually, the questions that will be asked, and ensuring that we get a broad representation of families and providers from across the county completing those surveys to give the commissioners a good perspective on what really is happening with children's mental health services in the area. That report will be given to the county board in May for Mental Health Awareness Month in that annual report. The Clay County Collaborative also met on the first. We voted to extend the contracts for the interim co-coordinators for that group. We reviewed the final budget and had a discussion on the job description, compensation, and how to advertise the coordinator position. Later that evening, I also attended the CAP LP board meeting and shared governance meeting. Later that evening, I also attended the CAP LP Board Meeting and Shared Governance Meeting. Let's see. Excuse me while I pull that up real quick. A lot of just general business, report backs from Policy Council. We approved out-of-state travel for staff members to attend a management and leadership training conference, looked at meeting dates, and an affirmative action plan. Also looked at a Board self-assessment to make sure that the Board is meeting all of the requirements. And on the second, I attended the Cass Clay Food Commission First Fridays Meeting. Featured at that meeting was the Red River Harvest Co-op. One of the things that they noted is when local farmers sell their produce to a grocery store, for example, the amount of money that they get back for that produce is really minimal. Selling through something like the Co-op, however, gives them a huge return on their investment. And so, that Red River Harvest Co-op is pretty new. It's, I believe it started last year, and you can order your groceries online and pick them up in Moorhead here once a week, and all of the produce comes from local growers. So, the Co-op takes 10% just to operate, and the rest of that goes right back to the farmer. Then, Sunday through Wednesday was at the AMC Annual Meeting. We had our Health and Human Services Policy Meeting, and commissioners all got the reports on what those policy priority items were, so I won't go over that right now. Lots of great sessions, good to connect with a bunch of commissioners and to talk about our Clay County priorities there.
I think that concludes my reports.
Okay.
If you think of anything, yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Commissioner Gross.
Yeah, I went to the AMC Session Two. On Sunday night, I attended the Minnesota Rural Caucus Meeting. It was the first time we hit the Capitol Hill Associates. They are the new people on the Board now. I mean, not on the Board, but they're running it now. I was impressed with them running their meetings. We came up with our policies, what we plan on doing with the, I prior, excuse me, not policies, priorities that we're going to work for, like county program aid, transportation funding, rural broadbanding, and county-based purchasing was put on there. There's a couple of other things we were supporting, like debt penalty, soil and water conservation, district funding, and rural crime, that were sort of taken off the policy priorities, and we thought we'd cut it down to around four things and work on those things. The ones in other sections, sessions, excuse me, the General Government, which I'm on the Board there too. There again, we came up with the four, trying to cut down, I think we had six of them, and as we were trying to cut down, I think we ended up with eight afterwards, so that didn't work out as right, what the plan was, but everybody wanted certain things on there, but we came up with eight different things. Some of the sessions I went to was the employee recruitment and retention that Mika County has put on, and as they were going, I was listening to the session, and most of us sitting there saying, hey, we do that, hey, we do that. And I think we're pretty much, retention, giving funds for people who bring people on, and if they stay on, giving funds is pretty much what their policy is, and we're already doing that, so I didn't get much more information on that, but we already were doing that. Next one I went to was the added development units. There again, I was at a planning commission meeting once with Matt Jacobson. He's got that all under control too, so. And then I went to a diversity meeting, a meeting on diversity, and gave just some funding, I mean, different ideas of what to do in retaining people, trying to get people on there, so. All interesting sessions. I was pretty much, I don't know, I thought it was a good session for AMC. And today, we hit the Highway Tracking Committee meeting. There again, we had Chris Spocky out here explaining our policies, MOUs with the diversion authority, and I went over the agreements, and Chris brought us a lot of good information that we have to be following. North Broadway Bridge is going to be January 24th, they're going to let out the bidding on that, and that's going to be removed. And also, CASA 18 will be worked on, bits out February 17th, and CASA 26 in late February. And we still have two variable hour plow drivers, so if there's anybody out there interested becoming involved with the Highway Department, please let us know. And we still have no application for Assistant Engineers, still looking. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Gross. We do have four minutes before our public comment, our truth and taxation. I will ask if we just take a brief break, and then we can finish the meeting after the truth and taxation. Is that okay? We'll take a break until 6 o'clock. Just a little after six, we will go ahead with our truth and taxation part of the meeting. It is the opportunity to discuss the 2023 budget and the proposed property tax. We'll go ahead with public comment as well and questions, but we'll start with our Administrator, Steve Larson. Members of the public, make sure that you've signed in, so we can have that as part of the record. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to like to welcome everyone here to TNT this evening, both in person, and those who are with us online. I would note that we did offer an opportunity to participate through public comment, through that piece. Again, just a reminder that tonight is specifically about providing comment on the 2023 budget. If you have specific issues or questions about your property valuations or taxes, unfortunately, the time to address these concerns has passed. Those were looked at in April and through June through the Appeals, Board of Appeals and Equalization. We do have our Assessor, Nancy Gunderson, here this evening and her staff to answer any questions. Citizens are certainly welcome to stay this evening if they would like, or they can meet with Nancy and her staff across the hall. First of all, just a good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. As you're aware, our budget process started this past May. The county auditor treasurer provided each of our department heads with their board packets or budget packets. They had roughly three weeks to put those together. They were brought together by our county auditor, and then went through them line by line with myself and Ms. Johnson. Those presentations then, the following week, came before this Board for, just to make made aware of. And we've, were, received multiple, had multiple meetings here at the Board level and received feedback and directives from this Board. Ultimately, taking that feedback, on September 21st, Resolution 2022-28 was approved, setting the preliminary levy, a budget at 3.99, which allowed us to comply with state statute, meeting the deadline before October 1st. I had truth and taxation this evening. I'll be presenting the proposed 2023 budget information packet, based on the certified preliminary budget, and allowing both for Board and public comment. I'll take a pause from time to time, but if you have immediate questions from the Commission, please jump in, and we'll certainly allow time at the end for our citizens to participate, ask questions, or make comments. With that, are there any questions?
Any questions for Steve before the presentation starts? All right, thank you.
My presentation has froze. All right, the first document for you should look fairly familiar. We had gone through this multiple times. This is the document which we worked through, the summary of levy 2023 by fund. Again, I don't generally intend to go through this, but just individually, but we will be covering each of these areas as we go through the document. Just to touch on a few areas, the tax levy for proposed came in at $44,017,002. We had an additional new request of $562,964. Much of those new requests dealt with capital improvements due to the increased costs of many of the things that we budget for each year. And also, there are multiple new employee positions for maintenance, custodial, and public health. To offset the budget, this Board chose to utilize $1.35 million in reserve funds, and we also had a COLA proposal of 4%, which was $1,402,418. This brought a total levy of $44,632,482. This year, we received $4,093,206 in county program aid, bringing our spread levy to We're fortunate to continue to have new construction growth here within the county, which was 1.2%, which took our net levy increase down to 3.99%.
Thank you, Steve. For members of the public, can you explain COLA?
COLA is our cost of living. Sorry, Madam Chair.
For staff?
Our staff.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Our next slide deals with our county levy, tax levy. If you take a look at this, this is the dollar month that we're asking our citizens of Clay County to contribute towards the levy, which would, this year would be $40,539,278. The levy is broken down into five separate and distinct revenue categories. The General Reserve Fund, $24,916,122, or 61.46%. Social Services, $11,070,184, or 27.31% of the budget. Road and Bridge, $4,014,214, or 9.9% of our levy. Debt Retirement is $493,395, or 1.22% of the levy, and Building Improvement Fund of $45,363, or 0.11%. Through the tax collection process, our county auditor, Lori Johnson, allocates our tax dollars into these appropriate fund departments. Any questions there?
Questions for Steve on this?
All right, our next item then addresses our county budget expenditures. As you can see, it's $104,810,30. Again, we, a majority of what we see here is our, have to do with our fixed costs. Our biggest fixed cost is our talented employees, impacts the largest amount here, but General Reserve Fund, again, from an expense standpoint, is $37,710,000, or excuse me, $37,710,532, or 32.16%. Social Services expenditures are $25,173,5811, or 24.55%. Road and Bridge is $14,730,63, or 14.05%. Public Health is $8,657,603, or 8.26% of our expenditures. The Juvenile Detention portion of the facility is $7,672,649, or 7.32%. Solid Waste is $5,095,758, or 4.6%. Our Debt Retirement is $4,552,893, or 4.34%. Our Internal Service is $2,713,059, or 2.59%. The Family Service Center expenditures are $1,791,663, or 1.71%. Major Improvements are $100,000, 0.10%, or Building Improvements, $50,000, or 0.05%. It's important to note for the public that these include all departments, which include Solid Waste, the Family Service Center, and the Juvenile Center, which are considered enterprise fund programs. These programs are considered self-supporting, in that the fees that are charged for their services support their operations of their budget and are not taken into consideration when establishing the annual levy. I think as we move forward and we grow, one of the areas as a commission and a Board that we will want to look at is looking at the major improvements and building improvements to ensure that our facility infrastructure can be adequately maintained as we grow as a county. I think as you can see, there's certainly a significant difference between our total expenditures and revenues collected through the levy process. The information that it's important for our citizens to understand that we act as an arm of the State of Minnesota and also the federal government, and the state and federal government has requirements and mandates, which they provide funding for the county to carry out those services, and we acted that pass through. These funds are used to make up the difference and balance the revenues with the expenditures. We continue to have some help through the federal programs that allow the county mitigate some opportunities with ARPA funding. COVID-19 is continuing to impact some of our budgets, specifically Public Health, Social Services, and the County Attorney's Office. Anybody have any questions on expenses?
Questions on this slide? Okay, Steve?
All right, if you, the next page, we'll look at the county levy history over the last 10 budgets. I think if you take a look, that from our last 10 years, they range from 3.53% in 2014 to 7.09% in 2007. Just a point of note, if you recall back in 2020, we did implement a market study, which certainly had an impact on our overall levy. From an overall 10-year average, we are averaging a 5.26%. If you remove two points, or excuse me, remove 2007, we're at 5.0 without that impacting there. We take a look at our proposed spread levy for 2023, and it's proposed at 5.19%. I think it's important for our citizens to understand that all these percentages listed here on this sheet are taken prior to taking into consideration new construction growth. Again, as we've talked about, the county has been fortunate to experience new construction growth, anywhere between 1.15% and 1.25% over the last budget cycles. This year, again, we are at 1.2%, which allows us to go down to 3.99%. As I mentioned earlier, in addition to new growth, the County Board of Commissioners may also utilize one-time use of reserves to offset the levy. These funds may become available due to higher-than-expected revenues, lower-than-anticipated expenditures, or a combination of both. This year, the Board made the recommendation to utilize the 1.35 million of fund balance. Lastly, an important note of recognition for our citizens is to address the consistency that the Board has taken in the approach with the levy increases. We do not see spikes, we do not see valleys, that these often can lead to short or long-term consequences, and I think this is a great example of the ghost of the foresight of our Commission being good stewards of the tax dollars. At the end of the presentation, I'll present a document from the Minnesota State Auditor's Office that captures the outcomes and benefits of consistencies in setting levies. Any questions?
Questions for Steve on this slide?
And the next couple of slides, I guess, just kind of show where we've gone from 2014 to 2023 in our levies, and also the county levy history, based on the certified levy from 2022. We also have some impacts, again, here from the graphs. And the next area that we have is the budget history. We take a look at the top left-hand of your corner addresses the revenues that Clay County plans to collect through three main sources. One, the levy which we have talked about, also state and federal government. also state and federal government, intergovernmental, we talked about the services that we provide on behalf of the state of Minnesota and the federal government, and also the fees. If you look at the bottom of that graph, our proposed, again, expenses, or excuse me, proposed revenues would be a hundred and five million, two hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. The next item are our expenditures. County utilizes, again, if we take a look at this in our expenses, we've kind of gone through some of these, but our total expenses for next year are one hundred and four million, eight hundred and ten thousand, and thirty dollars. Again, one of the things that we talk about each year is that Clay County utilizes internal service for large purchases. The money and dollars are spent, are saved each year and spent on specific years, and so that ends up impacting how our expenditures can be seen. Oftentimes, if you look through past years, as you'll see on the next slide, generally, when we have those expenditures, oftentimes, our expenditures can show higher than our revenues, but actually, because of the internal service and how we conduct that, it's just paying for those at a different date. So, anybody have any questions?
Questions for Steve on this slide?
All right, the next few slides and few pages deal with the expenditures by departments. We've spent a significant amount of time talking about these as we've gone through the budget process, but there are a number of different areas that have either a larger increase or a decrease, and so I just want to touch base on a couple of those. The county administrator position has a seven point four eight percent increase. That's a reflection on the organizational change and adding the communication coordinators. Also, that growth or increase is all based on salary and benefit-related. The auditors, just of note, there's not a significant increase, but just a reminder, we just went through an election, but our auditor treasurer's office budgets each year for the elections to try to limit the spikes from each other year. The county attorney's office saw a decrease based on salary adjustments and the change of their staff, also a loss of grant funding was impacted there. The grounds and building had an increase of thirteen point nine four percent. That was important to note, based on the fact that there's additional maintenance and custodial positions needed. Joe's also been working with the new buildings or the newer buildings and reallocating funds to adjust the expenses to specifically those buildings to get a better idea of the actual cost of operation. Planning zoning, we had an increase of six point nine four percent. Again, they added a vehicle as part of their budget, and also both the planning commission board of adjustments and also solid waste, there is a per diem increase for our citizen representatives added into their budgets. Medical examiner, unfortunately, from the sheriff's department's position, we had to have an increase there of thirty-eight point one percent, based on the need that we've seen over the last few years. Dispatch, we saw a decrease in the payment or the cost for dispatch based on the new census information. The overall percentage, based on the MetroCog percentage decreased, and so subsequently so did our cost for dispatch. The juvenile center had a decrease in the secure unit. Their two-year lookback was a little lower, but we also had, based on the excellent programming and services that are provided, we've also seen an increase in non-member usage that's been able to offset the cost for our members. Public health, we've had some additional revenues. We have insurance, and that also impacted their budgets. Metro council, again, when it comes to metro council, breaks into two budget categories, operation and overhead. The operation and overhead is funded primarily through the Federal Highway Administration and the Transit Administration, with a twenty percent local match that's required to receive the funds regionally, and again, through that MetroCog formula. There's also contracted planning services, and these are additional fees that are contracted for consulting services for specific projects approved by the MetroCog Policy Board. There aren't always contracting planning projects each year, but this year, there is. The Metropolitan Transportation Plan will be conducted next year, and so you saw an increase there. Our unallocated general saw a significant increase there. That increase are based off of MCIT costs, planned increases to insurance. We have funding in this area for future insurance increases and other professional services. We had changes into Chamber and Northern Lights Work Group. Again, that's census-related. Our road and bridge, again, coordinates with our five-year plan, and so next year, we're seeing a nine point three one percent decrease, and again, that's based on the state and federal dollars that we have to complete the projects. On the non-secure facility, I had an increase, and that was adjusted to adjust to the staffing plans based on the youth that they are serving. Solid waste, there's an increase there, and that reflects the new resource recovery facility and the operational costs. And last one we're going to touch on is the family service center. Again, there was a reorganization that went through. It's been over about a year and a half, but this was the first time that that showed up on our budgets. With that, I would yield for any other questions on expenditures.
Steve, I might be wrong, but looking at the county fair appropriations, I thought they had a request in. It's showing a decrease in percentage?
In that case, it does not, their allocation is not shown. It's in the new request section and not in this area.
Okay, all right. Questions for Steve? Okay, we continue.
All right, thank you, ma'am chair. The next document looks at the real estate projections. We break this down according to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar market value, a two hundred thousand, a two hundred and fifty thousand, and a four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar market credit. We stop at four hundred and fifteen because that is the maximum amount of market credit available. And so, historically, we've looked at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as kind of our benchmark. We've now shifted that to two hundred and fifty to more closely reflect what the values of some of our homes are here in our area. And so, if we, the sheet that you have up here, or the slide up here, specifically highlights the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you note the impact of the 2023 proposed budget from the county, if valuations were to stay the same, and we know that that's not, doesn't happen in our region, but if that were to happen, the Clay County resident with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars home would pay seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-two cents less than what they paid last year, or a decrease of six point one two percent. As part of the slide, we also take information from the school, the cities and townships, the EDA, and the watershed, and would note that this slide is based off information on the city of Moorhead properties. Lori, Ms. Johnson, and her staff have the ability to provide any of this information for any cities within our county also. The school, the school saw a seventy-five dollar and twenty-eight cent decrease, or a five point nine four percent decrease. The city or township was a thirty-one dollars and forty cent increase, or two point eight three percent. The EDA saw a seven dollar and two cent increase, or a twenty-one point three two percent increase, and the watershed saw a three point nine two percent, or three, excuse me, three dollar ninety-two cent decrease, or an eight point seven four percent decrease. And so, if you take a look from a homeowner in the city of Moorhead that had a market value of two hundred and fifty thousand, assuming no charges in value, no changes in value from the previous year, that citizen would see a decrease of a hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy cents per year, or a three point two percent decrease. Again, you can see that on the document that you have in your packet, the breakdowns from all the different values, they are all fairly close in their percentages. So, any questions?
Questions?
All right, just wanted to provide an updated summary from our estimated market values for here in Moorhead, or excuse me, in Clay County. If you take a look at the total estimated value of the county land, that's eight billion, thirty million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Artillable land is two billion, fifty-five million, eight hundred and thirty-five, or excuse me, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars, and this comprises a total of twenty-five point six percent of our estimated total market value in the county. Residential and land buildings take up four billion, three hundred and fifty-five million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, or fifty-four percent, fifty-four point two percent. Those categories equal roughly seventy-nine point eight percent, with the remaining twenty point two percent attributed to commercial property. As you can see, these percentage breakdown estimate values remain fairly consistent. We've seen a slight decline in tillable land since 2017, after seeing an increase to thirty-eight point three percent in 2014. Over the last year, we've seen some pretty significant increases in price per acre in land sales, which certainly could impact the estimated market value in future years. Any questions?
Any questions on the market values and tax capacity?
All right, and I guess lastly, I'd just like to address this document. It comes from the Minnesota State Auditor webpage, the Financial Comparison tab. I think that this board takes a great deal of pride and understands the importance of providing excellent service and amenities to the citizens of Clay County, also while doing it in a fiscally responsible manner. I know that that's important as we talk about that fact each year. Establishing a fair and equitable levy is stressed to me as an administrator and is passed on to each of our departments. This board does not take for granted its request in requesting citizens the additional levy dollars each year. Earlier this evening, I mentioned that I plan to provide a document that captures the outcomes and benefits of consistency in establishing levies each year. It's one thing to be able to do that, it's another thing to be able to show. And so, I believe this document supports the board of commissioners' consistent approach and the expectations of our board, or excuse me, of our departments to bring budgets forward that meet the needs of our citizens in the most cost-effective means possible. And so, if we take a look at a couple of the highlighted areas, when it comes to taxes per capita, Clay County rates eightieth out of eighty-six. And when I say eightieth, that's on the bottom. And so, there's only six counties per capita that have a lower tax rate. Charges for service, we've now moved to eighty-six out of eighty-six for the services that we charge our citizens through our different departments. Again, that's something that we continually evaluate, but that's where we are today. And when you look at total expenditures from a per capita basis, Clay County continues to be low at one hundred, or excuse me, eighty-one out of eighty-six. And I know this board continually takes great pride in talking about we're one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of Minnesota, including the metro. And I think this just goes to show as another example, again, while I know that no one on this board likes to ask for increases of our levy, but it just goes to show the consistency and what good stewards this board has been. So, with that, I would yield for any additional questions.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Steve in regards to the presentation? Like you noted, this has really been a conversation that we've been having since March, so these are certainly important facets, and we've really worked hard to get where we're at today. I do want to offer the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on the presentation. Certainly, if there's issues in regards to the appraisal process, I know Nancy's been made available to meet with you out in the other room if needed. But if you'd like to come up and ask any questions of the board, feel free to go to the podium and make sure and state your name for the minutes as well.
Jerry Zimmerman, I live just north of town here, a little ways. The proposed tax sheet that I received for one of the quarters of land that we had is up forty to eight percent. The rest of the stuff is like within the five percent that you mentioned. And this has been in the past, one of the first three hundred acres that gets taxed at the lower rate.
All right. Nancy, do you want to talk with Jerry on that? Before that, though, Jerry, one, thank you very much for coming here. It's important for us to hear that piece. It's always really important for us to have input from you. Is there anything on the budget that you had any questions about?
No, not really.
Okay, thank you.
So, his was a valuation question.
Okay, all right, Nancy can help you with that, Jerry? Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to address the board?
Hi, I'm Mike Cook. I live out in Highland Grove Township, I own Highland Hideaway. And I guess my, well, first of all, thank you for letting me air my grievances. My taxes have just gone through the roof, and I understand, when you read the statement, the taxes weren't raised, but we all know, you raise the property value, your taxes go up. My question is, how can the property value go up so much when I have made no improvements since the day I opened five years ago? We're coming off, oh, three years of COVID now, over a year of forced shutdown. How do you expect businesses to survive? It's really making it difficult. I'm basically going to be forced out of business or forced to sell because the taxes keep going up and up and up.
Mike, do you have the percentage, so we're...
About the what?
The percentage increase that you saw this year, just so we're aware?
Thirteen point six percent. And two years ago, I believe it was, it might be three years ago now, when the assessor was out, my increase was over three hundred percent. And the reason I was given was that, oh, you weren't completely, the building wasn't completely done when we were out there before. Okay, but how can I go up a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in value when I've made no improvements?
That's a question for Nancy in regards to that, Steve, was Highland Grove part of the, was that three years ago? They didn't do that this year?
I would have to check on that, ma'am chair.
Now, there's two components here, and one of the things that you mentioned was that, you know, it's the raising of the property value is so we can collect more tax. That's really not how this works.
Well, essentially, it is.
Well, so, just hear me out. So, to me, the reason why you would pay more tax would be because we're spending more money. So, if everybody's value goes up proportionately the same, so if you had a thirteen percent increase in your value, and I had a thirteen percent increase in my value, and the county didn't spend any more money, your taxes wouldn't go up. Where there can become an issue is if you did have a three hundred percent increase in your valuation, I think you mentioned something about two years ago you had it.
Yeah, it might have been three years ago, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so, in that particular case, if you had something that brought your value up, and nobody else saw that kind of increase, then you do take a bigger piece of the pie, and your taxes would go up. So, you know, and I think it's kind of a... So, you know, and I think it's kind of a, a lot of people are under the impression that the county just goes out and we raise values so we can collect more money. That's just, that's just not true. What we're required to do is have a value that's between 95, or 90 and 105% of the actual value of it. And those things happen through actual market comparisons. And again, your valuation, so was your valuation up 13% this year?
I didn't figure out the valuation part of it, but right on the sheet, the taxes show 13.6% increase.
Yeah.
It's a $2,291 increase.
Yeah, so that does, to me, that would indicate that you probably, you know, you probably took a bigger piece of the pie because of your valuation increase.
And again, it comes back to my question, how can the value go up so much when I've made no improvements?
Well...
Mike, just for my understanding again, was there a reclassification from the ag piece to the commercial piece? Is that, was that part of your initial three years ago?
It was never ag, it was homestead. And that's another part of it, my homestead exclusion dropped quite a bit also.
And a lot, there's multi-pronged to this, so we're trying to work through this. I know a lot of the homestead pieces, there was some substantial drops, and that's a legislatively approved amount, so that's part of it. And Nancy can answer the component in regards to the commercial and why there was such an exorbitant shift. I know that we've talked a lot in years about making sure that we had the right evaluation system in place so that people weren't seeing these huge, huge swings in valuation. That was something that I thought we had worked out.
You know, one of the things that can impact why, say, a commercial might take more in one given year, take more, or in some areas residential can take more in one year, and in some years our agriculture, it wasn't too long ago, our agricultural areas really took a bigger hit, and that's because of the market conditions that were there. And, you know, at one time, we had tillable land that was valued at $3,000 an acre, and now, you know, it's selling upwards of $8,000 an acre. And so when that all happened, of course, they got a bigger piece of the pie, and now that's coming back down through some legislative stuff that's come into play to help deal with that. Now, your valuation is, that's a deal to talk to Nancy about, and if your increase is 13%, then that does go to your market condition of your property.
Let's make sure that he can speak to her as soon as she's done, him, before he's done talking to Jerry, I think that's important, so we can answer that piece. Mike, and you heard the presentation, and I know there's different avenues, it's the valuation, but also the budget and tax. Did you have questions on the proposed 2023 budget at all?
No, I don't have any questions on that.
Well, I certainly, one, appreciate you being a business owner in Clay County. I know that that's something that has been difficult in the last few years, and...
Very difficult. Had I not had another full-time job, I'd be gone. I mean, there's no doubt about it whatsoever.
Those are definitely hard things to hear, but important for us to hear as well. I'm hopeful that we can answer some of your questions on the valuation piece as soon as she's done.
All right.
Anything else? Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the public on the budget? Because of the weather, we made sure to let people know that they'd have the opportunity to address the board during this part of the meeting virtually. Jackie, have you had any requests from any citizens to address the board during this piece? Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the proposed budget? All right.
Madam Chair, with the board's approval, then Lori and I would plan to bring a resolution forward next week for final adoption of the 2023 budget, based on the conversations we had today. There may be some minor tweaks that happen between now and then, but we would request permission to bring that resolution forward next week.
Thank you. Need a motion to bring the resolution forward?
No, just your approval would be enough.
Yep. We need to do it, so, thank you. All right. Anything else for the truth and taxation part? Thank you, staff. I know that it was challenging to get here this evening because of the roads. I appreciate your presence. Thank you to the members of the public for coming as well. Please be safe as you head home. We'll give you a couple of minutes to scoot out, and we'll then finish the rest of our meeting. You're welcome to stay for that. Commissioner Gross, you said that you had an addition to your reports, was that you attended something at the SWCD?
It's just that Paul Kravina's reception, not reception, a retirement of the Soil and Water Conservation District on Thursday night, and they had a nice, they had a nice program at the Soil and Water Conservation District, and I think someday we should have to have our meeting and give that presentation and really give a good overview of what they do for us in the county.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Mr. Campbell, would you like to give your reports?
Sure. On the 29th of November, we had a PIC committee meeting, Personal Issues Committee. There were, there's been a retirement that's going to be coming up in public health, so there's been some discussion about the director of nursing position and how that's going to be handled moving forward. There's some different ideas there. There's been no clear decision made on that through PIC. I think it's coming back to PIC again on the 20th of this month. And then there were three different issues that were brought forward as recommendations by, from the STRIVE Committee, and some of those are, you know, we had some concerns about some of those, and we're kind of going back to maybe re-modify some language on that. And there was one that had to deal with vacation. I think that's also coming before the board next, allowing the people who were on, what are they called? Probationary period. Right now, they have to wait to access their accumulated vacation time, and there's some language within, that's within some of the labor contracts that were, we want to try to mirror those, that language in what we're going to do with that. So that'll be coming forward with a recommendation to approve that next week. And then we looked at the COLA increases and the per diem rates, and we made recommend, and that's also going to be coming next week, Steve.
Yep.
Okay. Then on the 5th through the 7th, we were in Minneapolis for the AMC Annual Conference, and I did attend the Transportation Infrastructure Policy Committee meeting. There were several things that went on there. There was a lot of discussion regarding broadband and different programs that are now becoming more available. And we got a report on the electric vehicles and how that might impact revenues and the whole process in regards to that. And there is some money that the state has received to start building the infrastructure for charging stations within the state of Minnesota, probably more along the interstate corridors that they're going to start to work on, so. Then I, I also attended the MCIT Annual Meeting, and pretty much it was, we received the audit report. I think the amount that we're receiving on annual rebates to our premiums is probably, we noticed this year it was down, and they're anticipating it even being down more, and that's a lot to do with the earnings that are, as we all know, are down. Then on Tuesday, I do want to say that their keynote speaker that we had was really good, Gordon Graham. It was a fantastic presentation. I did attend a session on county commissioners and open meeting law issues, and I think Steve is going to maybe just bring up, clarify some issues regarding that, whether we do, does that today or not. And then I also attended another workshop on electric vehicles. And then Wednesday was, of course, the business meeting and the final approval of all the different platforms that we have. And I did, in the vendor fair, I did also spend a little bit of time talking with Apex Solutions. They are an entity that deals with leachate and landfills, and they are, I think they're actually doing some samples of our leachate, and there's an alternative method, but the concern about it, I think it's like a 20-year payback based on the investment, so we'll see. I think Cory has been talking, Cory and Brent from the landfill have been talking with And on, yesterday, December 12th, we did have our Substance Use Crisis Center project. I think that's moving forward pretty well. I don't know if Commissioner Mojo, if you're going to want to report on that, but we continue to look at the B3 stuff, the requirements that are there, and they're, the plan is coming along nicely, I think so. Yesterday, I also then attended the Clay County Resource Recovery semi-monthly meeting, and not a lot to report. I think we're getting down there to the end. I think we're, I think they're running out of work and looking at the middle of January, I think, and they'll be close to being able to wrap it up. Today, we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting. I met with Chris Bakigard, as Commissioner Gross had talked about, and there's, eventually they're going to want us to enter into a memorandum agreement on how we're going to deal with some of the roads that are going to be closed permanently as a result of that project, probably more township roads. And then I think the other things on there, I think Commissioner Gross reported on all those. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Ebinger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My report will be fairly short. I've had a, was unable to attend the AMC conferences this year. I had a couple of surgeries that came up unexpectedly, and it sidelined me. I did, however, get the vice chair on the public safety, and we'll be working with them on that and some of the issues that we've got that impact on us. In line with that, on the 6th, I attended virtually the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee that we've got. And one of the big issues we discussed was probation funding. We have three different delivery systems in the state of Minnesota for providing probation. We use one through the Department of Corrections, where their employees are here subsidized by the county. There's somewhere, you have county employees in various capacities. They're all different, and they're all funded differently. We did not get a legislation through to address the disparities and the concerns on the probation models that we've got last year, didn't get out of committee. But with the decrease in incarceration and more of an emphasis on community-based sentencing, you're going to need probation systems at work. We discussed this at length at the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, but also, if you've noticed, that's going to be one of the priorities that the Association of Minnesota Counties has identified for the board itself. It's one of the, not just with the Public Safety Committee, but with the board itself, that's a priority. Their recommendation is we go with county-based probationary system. That's going to be more transparent in funding. You're not going to have to compare apples to oranges anymore. You'll be able to see what counties are getting. So I think that's an important feature, particularly given the increases that we've got as part of the metro. So we'll be following that closely, and I'll keep you advised on that. Last Friday, on the 9th, I did attend the Clay County Employees' Christmas Party, and I was really, I don't know, how many tickets did they sell?
A little over 200.
A little over 200. The place was full, the employees really seemed to be enjoying themselves. It's just great that after all the time we've had with COVID, that our employees are getting a chance to experience the, you know, the ability to get together and enjoy their families and enjoy meeting together. And while there, they did extend thanks to the members of this commission who have helped to try and get those employee funds back in line after two years of COVID, with the inability to do some of the fundraising they've done. So it was a great event. I'm real proud of the people that we have that serve our citizens, and this was a nice way to watch them celebrate. That completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Last, two weeks ago, I also attended the PIC committee meeting, as reported from Commissioner Campbell. Later in the week, I attended the PIT 21 Discussion with Agregate and our Planning Commission Director, or Planning and Zoning Director. I also had the opportunity to attend the AMC Conference from December 4th through 7th. Huge gratitude for the opportunity to attend that. Such a great learning opportunity, a networking opportunity. Certainly gave, through the speakers and different sessions that I attended, lots of food for thought. I agree, as Commissioner Gross noted, there were several great groundbreaking initiatives that other counties were doing. It was great to hear that we've had those discussions here. A lot of the same challenges statewide. Certainly had a good keynote speaker, a speaking the governor attended to kind of talk about his continued desire to help out counties in the best way possible, but appreciate the opportunity, as noted, to attend that. I will continue to serve as chair of the state AMC Extension Committee moving forward. Last week, I also attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting. We did have a meeting that needed to be rescheduled due to some prior commitments with committees, but had a good discussion on the continued effort to move forward in advertising and alternatively than hiring the replacement for our executive director, who will be retiring. I attended the Clay County Detox Committee meeting. Really, a lot of design topics that we continue to talk about, the B3 design implications. We will be preparing those reports to state our position on that, and then really heard from staff to address in the design the best flow for staff and residents for that. And then talked about the purchasing. Staff will be working with Cullinex on that. That afternoon, I also attended the transfer station meeting, as Commissioner Campbell reported on, moving towards completion in that, and did hear that the transition committee that's made up of Clay County staff, but also City of Moorhead staff, has been meeting to address workflow as we move forward towards operation. And then had a discussion this morning with staff and representatives from Burns and Mack in regards to the final, reaching the final goal in completion of the project. I believe that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 29th, I also participated in the PIC that's been addressed, later that day, we had county management. Again, we're going to be shifting over our agendas, how we do our agendas here, probably around the first... around the first of the year, so we're, actually, our department heads are going through training either tomorrow, tomorrow morning, or Wednesday, excuse me, Thursday afternoon. We also reviewed the safety and security procedure for the departments that was addressed here at Board recently. Had multiple conversations with Cory Bang and Aaron in regards to the Resource Recovery Facility. I also met with Joe and Cory. I'll be sending out an email. We're getting to the point with the Resource Recovery Project coming to a close, we'd like to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony in an open house, and we're looking for, looking at it towards the end of January, 1st, 2nd, or 3rd of February. So I'll be reaching out to each of you to see your availability at that time. On the 4th, I participated in a MACA meeting. As I think I shared previous meetings, there's been some additional opioid settlements that have come into play. We found out through AMC that there will be some additional resolutions and addendums to the contract that you originally signed, and accepting, accepting the Jansen and the distributors settlements that we'll also need to do with these, and that'll be in the first quarter of next year. Appreciate the opportunity to participate in the annual conference. I touched base in the public safety, just to go off Commissioner Ebbinger. One of the items in regards to probation is they are looking for all 87 counties to adopt a resolution to support the formula change, and so I will be bringing that up for your consideration in the coming weeks. We'll have an open meeting, a meeting discussion, but I was hoping to bring that up at a later meeting. It was a good meeting. See, participated in the holiday party, again, on Friday night, as was mentioned. It was great to see, we haven't seen that many people in a long time, so it was great to see, great to see that. Substance use facility on the 12th, it's been addressed, again, just some deadlines. Again, this full board will probably be getting an update right around January 17th on our process. Commissioner Mojo mentioned that we have three variance requests in regards to the B3 that we hope to have an answer to by then, and again, hopefully have some bids before, for you, for your consideration of moving forward in the project in early March. Participated in the Resource Recovery Owners Meeting. Again, one of our biggest challenges is we're waiting on XL Energy to continue to hook up to the gas meter, which is impactful to us because we have to continue to heat, heat the area. Had, again, another STRIVE meeting. Again, we're looking at a Clay County Management Retreat, again, in, probably in April of this year, with the board approval, and so we're kind of putting that together as far as what that may look like. Earlier this fall, I asked the board about their willingness to allow me to potentially participate in AMC at a different level. I did, based on your feedback, I did reach out in interest of the Futures Task Force. I was notified last week that I was selected to be part of that, that group. It's composed of county commissioners, department heads across the state. Basically, their three main goals are to establish leadership development for commissioners, administrators, department heads, county government innovations, and focus on AMC research and development. And so if the board were to approve my participation, there are three training sessions, one in February, one in May, and one in November, that would be expected to participate in. And again, the travel costs reimbursed by AMC for that, it would just be allowing the time for me to participate. And so I don't know what the boards, if the board would be all right with that participation.
Well, certainly, I think as part of conversations with you, we have appreciated your willingness to elevate Clay County's presence on that stage, and I think it's been very beneficial. I've observed some practices that you've brought back from that, so I, for one, think it's, it's something that is in our best interest to allow you to continue to do. Commissioner Kaylee?
I've had conversations with a variety of commissioners that participate in that group, and it sounds like it would be very beneficial to Clay County to have you participate in that. Might I move that we approve Steve's participation in that group and all expenses that that would entail?
I can.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Kaylee, a second from Commissioner Ebbinger. I believe you had a comment that I, I didn't mean to stifle your comment.
No, I am very much in favor of this. We have somebody who's demonstrated real skills and leadership for our county, and he can only bring back more and extend some of the skills that he's demonstrated for us, for other people in leadership positions in the state, so it's a win-win.
Any other comments on this? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Just wanted to touch base, I did receive information today from Robert Wilson of West Fargo, I believe, is acting on the JPA for the Red River Regional Dispatch Center, I think, next week. Per the JPA, once fully executed, we do have, we would have two delegates. I just wanted to confirm Commissioner Ebbinger and Commissioner Campbell are currently on the Dispatch Committee, that we would be, we would be appointing them to that position that the board wishes.
Need that motion today?
I could, yeah.
Motion by Commissioner Gross to appoint both Commissioner Ebbinger and Commissioner Campbell. Continue the appointment.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Are you willing to? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
And just the last thing connected to that, we're, we're working, Cass County continues to work with Sanford on a lease agreement for the land for that facility, and they're also working at, with SE Architects in regards to establishing the fee, fee and design services so that we can get the final cost of the project, with the understanding that Clay County's contribution is capped at 1.5 million. And that concludes my report.
All right. Anything else? We are adjourned.